Before we get started. Uh, with our work. Looking at the, uh, the agenda.
I propose that an addition under four, A B C like a four D. We have someone.
You want else? Got anything?
No, for God. Thanks. The agenda's approved. Uh, number two, approval of previous minutes, um, or past meeting. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, put that on the consent agenda. Personnel status, I'm gonna look that over. You don't have any, I think in the jail, like they had two, maybe. Any questions on that? Okay. Move right on to number four. Uh, board of pa- appointments and proclamations. We do have, um, four A, a proclamation, uh, the adoption awareness month. Uh, this is something we've done before in the past and everybody fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, uh, four C, uh, we have a proclamation honoring the eightieth anniversary of the Dade County Library. That's something that's happening tomorrow, uh, eleven o'clock. And they want the, as big a crowd as they can get there. So if you've got time and all, if you need to go over there, we do have a proclamation we're gonna present tomorrow, not tonight. Everybody fine with that?
Yep. You should get B there.
Yeah, B. Oh, hospice month. Okay, and then we got on, uh, four B, we got the proclamation of, uh, hospice month. And we've done this one also in the past, uh, of twenty-four. This is November twenty, of twenty-four as, uh, hospice month. Everybody fine with that?
Good.
Okay. All right, and now we move down to D. Uh, we have Mr. Josh Engle, and who you got with you, Josh?
Who's he?
Oh, yeah, I see the, the, our elementary principal there. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Dade County Commission and Department Heads, on behalf of Davis and Dade Elementary Schools, we extend our heartfelt thanks for making it possible for our students to visit the corn maze and the pumpkin patch on Sales Lane. This experience provided an invaluable opportunity for our students to learn outside the classroom, connecting with nature and exploring a fun, hands-on agricultural setting. The trip not only enriched their understanding of our local community, but also fostered teamwork, curiosity, and a sense of wonder. Watching our students engage with their surroundings and jo- and enjoy the activities was truly rewarding. Your support and commitment to the educational growth of our young learners is deeply appreciated. Thank you for helping create memories that will stay with them for years to come. And Davis Elementary and Dade Elementary has provided, um, some posters up there in front of your, uh, desks. And, uh, each one of you, uh, Ms. Barton sent a card for each one of you from Davis Elementary, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I think everybody had a good time, I really do, you know, it's just a, it's a special day and hope we make it a little bigger every year, you know, have a little different, you know, something to do, yeah.
But we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And more events, more types of those events?
Okay. Move down to, um, five, approval of SPOSS capital equipment. Uh, five A, Mark, you wanna come up and talk to us a little bit? Mark Gibson, he's chief of, or Davis Fire Department.
So Davis is requesting, uh, SPOSS money for three, uh, Life Pack One Thousand AEDs. Total cost of, uh, ten thousand four ninety-six sixty-one. This'll be, uh, one for each engine and one for our rescue truck.
You got to be, um, you, you were a friend, you should put them in here.
Yeah.
Now, these are compatible with what we've got, right?
Yeah, the, yeah, we dealt.
I know, I know y'all talked about it, but make sure anything, any department, you know, we need to try it from now and keep anything like that, you know, uh, the same.
We dealt with, uh, tile to make sure that this is compatible with, uh, memorials and, uh, Dade County's EMS, so we swap out packs and patches and whatever.
You got any questions, Mr. Cartline, that's your district, you got any, any difference?
No, I don't have any questions on that.
There ain't no question, we'll put it on the consent agenda. That's coming out of SPOSS, out of your, right, Dawn, or is that coming out of the?
SPOSS.
That's good, okay. That's good, thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Move down to number six, Historic Courthouse, uh, project renovation, Mr. Cole Atkins, um, report.
Good evening, everybody. We'll start out with our budget status. Current contingency is forty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, construction schedule, we're currently refinishing the first floor hardwood and will be touching up paint from now until more than likely the end of the project. Millwork installation, we had some paneling upstairs that we removed and sent back to the shop due to some finish discrepancies. Those have arrived back on site and we're waiting to install those. Uh, our final flight of stairs to the second level's been completed. Our door hardware's on site awaiting install. Our matching new wood panel doors are on site waiting to install. And our new site lighting has been installed and all of our plumbing fixtures have been installed except for our kitchen equipment. Which Dawn, Townsend, and myself have been in touch with Supreme Restaurant Equipment out of Chattanooga, Tennessee and all that's in the works. That's all I have.
So give us the date, when we're gonna?
Couple of weeks.
Okay.
Quick as I can.
Well, that's fourteen days, you know.
Fourteen days, couple of weeks.
That's right. That's all it did, fourteen days.
All right, that's good, that's a good report. I know it's just.
First time he said weeks.
It's really looking good. Fourteen days, I'm glad.
Weeks could be plural.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions?
Nope, looking good.
Good report, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right. Down to. Okay, uh, our lease agreement now, Dawn, have you got, uh, have you got that ready? How many is four?
Their own, their own loan.
Okay. That's on the, on se- number seven, this is the lease agreements for space inside.
You got four, really. Um, there's one for the IDA and that's the last one on the right, if you were opening that up. And then the other three are listed there. Those are for the, um, Dade Alliance, oh, Alliance for Dade, sorry. Uh, and then across the hall from them is, they've got a gift shop. And, uh, then next door to that is the Regional Visitor Center, you know, we typically call RVIC. Those, uh, have a, uh, an agreement in place for three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per each, per year. I think it was per year.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And then the, uh, IDA is three thousand.
This year, the IDA is just a wonderful.
Oh, that's okay, anyway. So, um, those are the ones we have. I don't know if we need to do one with HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission. I mean, 'cause we need to provide them room, but I guess we could and then.
Probably be a good one, Robin, go ahead and cover it just that way.
And in lieu of that, also maybe tweak a little bit because they raise money through the local, uh, historical society and they have a not-for-profit account. It was set up, designated just for courthouse type stuff. It's not, it may not be related completely a hundred percent to courthouse stuff, but it's, it's, it's used for that purpose such as the purchase of the windows, purchase of, uh,
So it's a five, like a five-one-C-three, is it?
Yeah, it is a five-one-C-three, so it would, it's tax deductible. And so those are, uh, that one's just a little bit different. I don't know if we'd have a monthly lease in place, it's just more like in-con services and stuff. And then, and an extension of that, the vault area would be an extension of the library actually for archive purposes. But it's date, it's, it's books and articles and things related to specifically Dade County government stuff, so.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, where do we come up with our monthly rent?
Well, the first year's gonna be hard because we don't know really what the power's gonna be and the water. So, um, it's kind of a guess and that's why it's only an annual agreement too. 'Cause we may, you know, they may wanna renegotiate it if the power and stuff is, um, not as bad as it comes up to be.
So do we look at a fa- fair market value price and square footages that they're gonna occupy and go by that, or did we just come up with this number on our own?
We had a meeting in Ted's office back months ago with the IDA board members, some of the members. Um, not, not the IDA, the, uh, Alliance for Dade. And, um.
How does this rent price compare to what they're getting now?
They pay that to a private individual. I really don't know what they pay.
It's, I think, I'm pretty sure it's higher.
We're talking about what they pay, like Robin, uh, the rental?
That's what I was trying not to, that's what I was trying not to say.
I think that this is higher.
Well, the, for the front office there where the, uh, welcome centers, they pay five hundred a month for that.
Thank you for hearing that.
I'm, uh.
Yeah, you didn't have to do that.
But I mean, you know, they, we have an agreement with them, they do quite a few services for Dade County. Uh, they do all of our advertising and stuff. So, I mean.
They do, and they get sixty, seventy percent of our hotel motel tax now too.
But that's statutory.
I understand that. I think we're below market value on the rent. I would like to look at the rent rate, 'cause I think it's at least about half of what it should be.
I don't know that they can afford it. So, I mean, I.
But they're taking up the whole, we're renting, we spent over a million something dollars on the courthouse, they're taking the whole building and we're getting a thousand a month.
Well, it's for the purpose of tourism. I mean, that's what we've said all along, that's what we took to the legislature and they approved.
That is my opinion on this, on this lease agreement.
Well, we can pull, you know, like we can, we don't have to, you know, approve it tonight, we can prove it in December or not approve, you know, we can do some a little more research on it. We can go, you know, we can, I'm sure there's a, a few counties inside of Georgia that's kind of, uh, some like, uh, maybe White County or whatever, you know, the.
I don't feel like we could go by county because it's more of a location. So, you know, because it's, you take the businesses around the courthouse and look at what their rent is would be more of a, I mean, I don't feel like you.
But do you even think that the twelve thousand, roughly twelve thousand a year, a little more will even cover the power bill and stuff?
I don't know. 'Cause it's all LED and new HVAC and we, it, you really can't compare it to what we had before, 'cause.
No.
But the purpose of the building is for tourism.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, and they are our agent for tourism.
Yeah, if we don't have, we can't, you can't collect the, um, hotel motel, I mean, it's part of that, it's part of that.
Yeah, and, uh, also the, the rental, that money would go back to general fund, right?
Yes.
So.
That does help offset the, the bills to the general.
And has that been set yet, or?
I mean, we estimated it based off of these, about thirteen thousand a month, but, I mean, thirteen thousand a year, but we don't know.
Right, oh, yeah, I know we don't know, so I didn't know if that had been, uh, I missed a couple of meetings, so.
So, we can, we can, uh.
I mean, I don't know if they can afford it. I'd suggest pulling it off and voting on it separately. With the underneath business.
Just ta- just ta- the call of vote, on it?
Yes.
Well, I'd rather do, I'd rather vote when we got the, uh, Lamar Seafill.
Okay.
And have a full board, which we'll have that in December.
All right.
Well, I know it'd be a short lease agreement, but what if, since we're in the middle of a budget? And another budget will begin in six months, could we look at this for six months instead of a year?
Sure.
And that way, we're gonna have a good idea of the.
At this price, I think you're just barely bumping the power bill.
And plus, they'd be on their same cycle, that may be on the same, their budget here, would it end or start? I don't know.
I think their service is rendered almost equals free rent.
Uh, I think it's pretty close, yeah.
My opinion.
And we can do that.
What they're trying to do is bring in a lot of, in, a lot of different tourism and functions in Dade County that helps our sales tax, our east SPOSS, our lost, and our SPOSS.
And the decorations that they do.
But that would give, I mean, if we could do that and just look at this on a six-month basis, still give, to see how they're gonna, you know, it gives them six months to work toward that goal. And it gives us, in a budget year, because we start in December, uh, I mean, well, if we get it open in December and they move in.
Well, I mean, there's an automatic renewal function in this, but yes, you could do six months, 'cause Commissioner Owens.
Really just let everybody, let them look at it, they let us look at it, or the, not us, but the commission, right, to look at it and see what, uh, 'cause, I don't know, but, you know, Philip makes a good point, we don't know. You don't know what you don't know, but that gives you six months to look at electric bills and all that and see how it's going.
Yeah, that'd give you a timed, timeframe of what it would look like.
Well, there's four counties at least I can think of, it's just similar to ours, like White County, I mean, it's got a courthouse right in the middle and they, they got their chamber, you know, and all in that now.
Blairsville.
But, but the majority of them, uh, you'll say they don't pay rent.
They don't pay rent.
That's just it.
Blairsville doesn't.
Because they look at it, but, you know, we may be a little different, you know, but that, if you wanna compare it to them or, 'cause, you know, it'd be a good comparison on them because it isn't the center of town, though they were built the same area as we, well, they've, well, and one of them, I know they spent, uh, renovated, but some of them might not have renovated and spent a million dollars, I don't know, but do it for six months, y'all can look at it, come back and you have a, maybe an idea and a good number, you'd have something to, to base it on. If you wanna charge them ten thousand dollars a month, whatever, I mean, you could, you know. Or, you know, you may find that there's, those counties have a reason for not charging them anything. I don't know. If y'all wanna do that, that's what we'll do.
So what are you proposing to do?
Let it fi- just like it is right now for three, uh, for six months. With the understanding that it's a possibility to go up.
So, are they, um, are bu- our budgets are the same, like, are we on the same?
I don't know what their budget is.
Yeah, I don't either.
You mean their year, you're talking about the year?
I don't know.
So, but on the building, we're supplying water, power, and insurance, correct?
Yes, you are.
I'd be willing to do it for three mon- for six months and then look at the numbers.
For six months?
Six months, that's just right.
I think I'd give you time to kinda look everything like Robert said, yeah. I'll kinda just put that on consent, on the consent agenda. Anything wrong with that, Robin?
No.
All right. All right.
If I say six months, I assume you mean to, to July one, or is that?
Yeah, to the, the beginning of a new budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, July one. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
'Cause we're not gonna be in it before December anyway, I wouldn't. Well, according to Cole, we may be moving in next week.
Be moving. Be moving through the month, probably December.
Yeah.
So, uh.
It could be less.
Okay, just, uh, move down to, uh, number eight. The, um, IDA projects update and request for funds from Evan Stone, the director. Evan?
Commissioners, thank you very much. Uh, do you a quick update? We've got several projects, I was just trying to count them all, in the industrial park. We've got, uh, three that are near completion, Trenton Pressing, of course, with their new building. Chattanooga Industrial Motors is wrapping things up after the first of the year. Uh, if you've been by there, you see their building is up and they're, they're, um.
It looks good.
Yeah, they do, they, they really do. And, uh, they're gonna be moving in sometime, the, maybe first or second quarter of next year, they're not in really hurry because, of course, they do have their existing building on Highway Two-Ninety-Nine. Uh, Vanguard is doing their, uh, uh, they're doing about a one-point-two-million-dollar, uh, uh, upgrade on their facilities with paving and, uh, asphalt, or excuse me, uh, concrete around their building. They seem to be, uh, doing exceptionally well. Uh, we were able to, uh, tour our Congress lady, uh, down there and, um, also a couple of others. I think we, uh, Dawn went down and, and went through it, and we're talking about Vanguard. Every trailer that you see is paid for. But, I mean, they're just waiting to be picked up, so, I mean, they haven't, they haven't got inventory that they haven't sold. And they're still producing a lot, so they're doing, they're doing well. And that's the three that are in the process of completing an expansion. And just in the last couple of weeks, we've been able to, uh, to, uh, work and sit down with four different companies, uh, that are in the industrial park that are gonna be doing some expansion, expansions coming up next year and the next two to three years, so. And I, I'll bring you more about that as we get a little closer. Uh, there's a few of them that are still holding close with some NDAs and don't wanna get it out yet, that they're gonna do expansions for that. So, in the industrial park, we are, uh, I, I'm very pleased with the amount of progress and, uh, expansion that our industrial, uh, partners are doing, for sure. We were able to do what we called a, we didn't know what to call it, I came up with an industrial summit. And I know, uh, our county executive, incoming county executive, were both there. We had about eight different folks, we had Georgia Power, uh, we had, uh, we had the top of Georgia and the JDA and we had, we gave them all packets of every bit of state incentives that all of the different companies can use. Uh, even down to a hundred-thousand-dollar investment, the state offers income tax growth credits, uh, for them. So, we got them all in the room and, uh, superintendent's here, we appreciate it, we, we were able to use the high school and their private dining room. Had twenty-one folks from the industrial park that, uh, that, that came, it was about a four-hour summit, they asked questions. We tried to give them all the answers and, uh, our county attorney, or IDA attorney, excuse me. Uh, he and I went over pilot programs and, and different things and the law structure of how getting, you know, all that done if they were doing big expansions. So, everybody seemed to really enjoy the information. After that, I got three, three calls and I've already had two of the meetings, you know, just from that industrial summit. We'd never done it before, but I wanted to get everybody in one room and give them, you know, the old cliche, I think, uh, uh, we're from the government and we're here to help. Uh, it is truly on economic development, from the state's perspective, they've got a lot of incentives, the local level, if you're doing much, you know, a big enough expansion, we can help through the Industrial Development Authority. So, uh, with, uh, that, that's kind of what's going on. We've had, I've got two or three projects that have been put on hold because of the election, well, the election's now over. Uh, you know, they were, they were basically, well, let's wait till twenty-twenty-five, see what the interest rates are and stuff like that. Just in the last couple of days, I've already had a couple of new phone calls, so that's a great sign. You know, we don't know what, if any of them, sometimes I'll get three or four and they don't never materialize. We'll send out the information, but, uh, then we'll hear back from a few. So, economic growth, especially just boom, right after the election, seems to be, you know, the phones are starting to ring, so that's a good sign. Um, one of the, uh, to, uh, to bring and request, uh, we were able to, with the help of the city, Alex is back here and the county, and I wanna, Billy's here, really pat him on the back and his road crew. The, uh, High Top and, uh, High Top and Vanguard, that complete road through the industrial park, the new one, completely paved. It's done, everybody seems to be really satisfied with it. It was done with an extra thick base because of the tractor trailers. I think, I don't know if the city's actually marked it, but they're gonna. Strapping's coming. So, uh, we handed a fifty thousand dollars that the Industrial Development Authority had set aside from the old SPOSS and it has been basically setting there. We put that with a hundred and ten, so we bought, basically bought the asphalt and, along with the city. And, and the county did the, uh, the labor on it and that whole road is paved, so. That gives us a, uh, an extra way out for trucks, uh, to go out the north end there where the railroad tracks come together. So that's, that's good, so I'm requesting a hundred and ten, uh, that will finish up the paving, we had the fifty, so. What our parts of the city was a hundred and sixty total, but we're just asking a hundred and ten from the new SPOSS 'cause we had fifty from the old one a long time ago that we've been waiting to pave that road. And I do believe, didn't you tell me, we got six twenty? Six ninety, so it would, uh, it would bring us down to a little under a half million of what would be left on, uh, on our reserves. So, any questions on that before I move on to something and I think.
But that one, that one tan you're asking, i- it's all going for asphalt?
Yeah, everything that we did, I believe.
To match the city.
I wrote the check to the, uh, and, uh, the chairman signed it for the hundred and sixty. But I wa- I did wanna let y'all know, the fifty was from the old SPOSS, ever how many years ago that we hung on to. You know, for just, as Foghorn Leghorn says, for just such an emergency. But anyway, so that's fifty from the old, this is just a hundred and ten from the current one.
So what was the total price on the asphalt?
Two hundred and nine thousand.
Two oh nine?
But that was some extras that the city covered as well, that was previously paid, that's already headed in where the trucks were coming out from that covers eight or ten more thousand. Where the asphalt started at the bridge.
Yes.
We re-caught that all the way to the railroad, which was in that, the city cover on top.
So if there's any, any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer. Before we move on to something, I think you're gonna hopefully enjoy.
Are we fine now with the, um, with the money now, the, uh, they're all down from SPOSS before we go any further?
It's designated to them in the IDA, IGA.
What now?
Intergovernmental Agreement that we signed already, so it's their money, really. I mean, if they spend it correctly, and that sounds like a capital increase, a capital project.
He won't let us spend it any other way.
Your board approved it.
Oh, yeah.
The board, but he's still, he's still, they need to come to.
That's why he's here.
That's, yeah, that's.
We're good here with that amount.
Asking for the, under the hundred and ten or?
Well, this is what we've all been approved to now with it, so.
Well, that, the fifty had been approved a long time ago.
Fifty's not on the table.
No.
That's not even our money, that's IDA money.
It's already set in some.
But it's not our money, it's their money.
It's their money anyway, yeah.
It's in a bond fund.
Okay. Yeah.
So is it a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty?
Hundred and ten.
Yeah, this is for, I said we've already approved that much.
One ten, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I got you.
All right, everybody fine, we'll still. I know we said it's our money, but that's why he's here to ask us.
Right. It's part of the agreement.
I mean, I'm fine with it being on the consent agenda, Mr. Cartline, you all right?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
All right, let's just move on.
I wanna tell you, the, uh, what I'm fixing to show you is a, um, is a piece of software or a platform that we have, uh, through, uh, we bought it through the Economic Development and the Industrial Development, shared the cost on this, uh, this particular platform. It's called Placer AI. It gives us now the ability to be able to look, uh, multiple years, but, uh, I don't wanna thank, uh, Seth, one of our, um, one of our board members is here and he's running the, uh, computer, 'cause he and I have been working with the company to actually learn how to run this facility or run this software. The first thing I wanna be able to show you is the Dade County Sports Complex. And, um, the Dade County Sports Complex has had seventy-nine thousand visits and this is over a twelve-month period. Seventy-nine thousand folks have, uh, been, has visited the sports complex. They stayed an average dwell time of fifty-four minutes, you can go on down. This will give you the activity of when those, uh, and, Commissioner Cartline, you, you're exactly right, you told me exactly. He said that, that here's where they're gonna be and you can see exactly where the, uh, higher usage per month was. And we can look at it daily, we can look at it weekly. So, if you bring in something and I'll sho- I'll, I'm gonna show you the cities here in just a second, but you can see what we're looking at. It also gives us a heat map of where people come from that use our facility. Now, you can see that even in Chattanooga and over in Marion County and down in Alabama, these folks would be coming for tournaments. You know, you can see where they use, but the majority of them is gonna be right there in the hub of, uh, the city of Trenton. Can you zoom in just a, a little bit there? You can kinda see where the, the majority of the folks that visit the, uh, Dade County recreational facility come from. Going down just a hair, I can't remember exactly what all it will, uh, it will show us. Gives us household income even, you know, down to the, uh, down to the point, little, little bit further. I think this is about all, that, uh, this is different outdoor and recreational facilities that we can see. You can see within a fifteen-minute drive, this is the number one place to go. But, and then I'll, I'll explain how that does, uh, help us especially with retail in just a minute. Let's look at the, oh, oh, do you have any questions on this particular one, since this is y'all's facility for the county?
Where does it pull this information from?
Uh, there is a, uh, an algorithm, but it's basically for cell, cellphone data. Now, keep this in mind, uh, go back up to the little map. It does not give us data on schools or churches. Those two, because of security reasons, are not available. And if you'll notice the, uh, the little bitty map up top there, you know, the, uh, keep going up, Seth, I'm sorry, where it shows right, that one right there, if you notice that little notch there, that you see? We had to notch that out because of the head start up on the hill. It would, it said data not available until we notched that. that out because it's, you know, we don't get to see that data. All right, go to the city so we can look at some comparisons. And I know the, the mayor has seen this. The city visits seventy-four thousand here in the city. They stay an average of sixty-six minutes at their, uh, at the, uh, Trenton City Park. Going down, I think this is very, very telling. Hmm. You know what day that was?
That'd be Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, fourth, with the, uh, Fourth of July celebration. There was five thousand, what, five thousand nine hundred people come in and out during that one day. This tells me this data is right because we all know that they had a big celebration. We had a big celebration there. Had no idea how many people come, but now we can come within reason of how many.
Did it show the stats on New Salem, on the...
Uh, we could probably look that up.
I didn't know we had that.
Uh, New Salem Mountain Festival.
Be interesting to see. Oh, the fireworks, you know, the fireworks and, and the festival too.
Going down before, well Seth will look this, this will look at the, the heat map that, uh, that we've got for the, uh, city park. Same, same pretty much where the, where the folks come from. So you can see a lot of Day Countyans are using it. A lot of folks in North Alabama, uh, Lookout Mountain, uh, even some of the folks over in Chickamauga that would come over for ball tournaments and different things like that. And this would also include the Fourth of July. If I put you on the spot and go back to the Fourth of July, can you pull up that one day of where those people came from? I don't want to put him on the spot too much. This software is phenomenal of what we can do. It tells us the weather and the whole nine yards that day. I don't, if we pulled it up for that day, we probably could be able to tell you where those folks come from on a heat map. There it is. Is that it? Right below there? Is that the same one? It's not. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put him on the spot because obviously we're just now learning these...
But how, how's the heat map generated? I mean, have you...
The heat map is, is basically all of this data and where those come from and where they return to.
I was gonna say if it's kind of zebra here on this building and the...
And this is a very interesting part right here. Prior to being at the Trenton City Park, and we can do this on everything, eighteen percent came from home, twelve percent came from fast food.
Four percent ate.
They left, twenty-seven percent went home, nine percent got something to eat, six and a half percent went back to work. You can see, we can see where that, where that individual goes. Now, right off the bat, we have no idea who that individual is because that data is not available to anyone. Uh, but, uh, if you have a cellphone, and there's some other, uh, things that they use to be able to pick up the algorithms and Seth may tell us way above my head.
They use retail data. So if there's a company that participates in this, uh, their part of the splash, that's...
There's a, they're more than just cellphone data, but this is, this is the main, the main thing. So I wanted to show y'all the recreational facilities that y'all are in charge of where you can have rest assured of, of the amount of people that are actually using those facilities. I, I don't think we've ever been able to know exactly how many came down there, but now you do. And, uh, this is, uh, we have access to this for a year and we can go back and see what happened two years ago and three years ago so we can develop patterns on what we did. Uh, let's go, I want to show y'all, Mayor, you have any, thanks Seth, we're talking about the city. Um, I want to show y'all one retail outlet. Now, keep in mind, we can do this on other retails, but I, everybody knows McDonald's. This is McDonald's at one thirty-six. Eight hundred and seven thousand visits in the last twelve months. Um, what I think this is, you know, the average dwell time is nine minutes and that would include people sat down through the drive-through, of course. Going down a little bit, you can see the, uh, the, uh, you can see when they're closed. You can see the holidays. You can see Christmas. You can see January first. You can see, uh, Thanksgiving. Uh, you know, that's what, that gives us the comfort. This data is pretty good, pretty accurate because they're, they're closed that day. So go on down. This will tell you who uses our McDonald's. And you can even back out and see the southern United States and who's, you can see who uses it. Now, let's go to the part where we want to look at the different McDonald's. All right. There's eight hundred and ninety-seven participating nationwide, okay? And there's four hundred and twenty-four in the state of Georgia. Our McDonald's is in the top twenty. It's number sixteen in the entire state as far as people in traffic. It's phenomenal to me. I will tell you, you don't have to look this up because Guthrie's, number one in the state. Oh, you've got it. I'm s- good. Thank you. You can see that Guthrie's, there's ten in the state of Georgia and then the number one Guthrie's is here in Trenton. And there's forty-eight Guthrie's all total and he's number twelve out of the entire franchise of the number of visits. Go, go back to McDonald's. I want to show you. Go to the, uh, uh, go out thirty minutes and, and they're number one. Well, go to the four, top four in fifteen-minute drive and view the list. It'll tell you Lafayette, Brown's Ferry and Jasper were number one. And really, even behind Lafayette by a couple hundred thousand visits. I just wanted to show you what we can do with retail. This is gonna help us tremendously on the retail side to be able to put together some packages if we've got companies coming in and they say, what kind of traffic do you have? You know, when I say that our county's sixteen thousand, they can't produce numbers like this because we just don't just have the sixteen thousand that utilize our retail outlets. So I wanted to just kind of show y'all, show y'all that. Now, what we can do from the other side, you got the economic development side, from the industrial development side, uh, we have a, uh, way to be able to look at the entire industrial park and say, where does our workforce come from? We can pull it up on the heat map. You know, where do they go when they get off work? We can say, okay, thirty-four percent went to the gas station. They're buying gas here, you know, so we can, we can kind of get a better idea of what's happening with, with folks going in and out. I think that's it. I don't want to put you on the spot no more, but I...
That's a good tool. I mean, it's one of the...
Oh, it's a, it's a great tool.
And, you know, especially if it's, if it's truly accurate, you know, that's a, you know, it's, uh, you know, and but, you know, so you're gonna be, you'll be able to like if, uh, like a plant comes in or even if that, let's say you're a private business owner, you know, that's free to them to, for you, to contact you.
I'll be able to show, uh, show them if they want to see the data.
Yeah.
And, uh, if I have, uh, let, let's say I have a company that, that says, okay, we want to look at putting our franchise here.
Yeah.
But I want to see, you know, what does the other fast food restaurants do? And that will be able to show to a degree of how many, uh, how many visits they have. So, I mean, it gives us a, a good tool and...
So they'll contact you? I mean, that's, you know, we're on...
Yeah, uh, we're, uh...
Contact number? I mean...
I don't think, well, I thought, I thought, uh, the chamber was here, but I don't see her. She's sitting on some of the training, uh, with us for the economic development. But, uh, yeah, that'd be the best way you can contact me.
And it'll be available like in the next, what, a few weeks? I mean, like...
Yeah, we can show them if, if they want to be able to do that. You know, it's fine. I can, I can do that. Uh, there's reports that we can, we can print and different things like that, but, uh, it gives us an idea. I told Commissioner Hartline beforehand, uh, can you do the park right fast? Uh, I told Seth, I ain't gonna put you on the spot, but I've done it three times tonight. So that's forgiveness.
Do what? Don't take it off the...
There you go. Oh, you know, a lot of people I've heard over the years, well, there's four hundred thousand people or three hundred thousand that go to our state park. Well, they all come up from Walker County and they don't come through here. This data tells you different.
Yeah.
The majority of the folks that go to the park come through one thirty-six going to the mountain. So it gives us that type of data to be able to show folks. And if he can get it pulled up, we'll look at it. If not, there again, I put him on the spot and I'm sorry. Three hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred visits. They spent three hundred and thirty-one minutes on an average. Uh, so they're doing some hiking or doing some camping or, or doing something. And, uh, you can see the days that they use it. And this, uh, back out. Let, this will show you where the folks come to visit Cloudland Canyon. There's folks coming from Nashville. There's folks coming from Birmingham, uh, from Knoxville, Chattanooga, of course, Atlanta, uh, all over the south that visit our park here. And, uh, we've just never had this type of data for it to be able to pull up and pretty quickly look at how many people utilize the, the different things. So you can see this. Now, go back in. I want to show them the, uh, the activity on Highway one thirty-six because it'll, it'll show, maybe not on this map, but it'll show us, uh, where, uh, where the traffic. I fifty-nine to Trenton is the biggest route. As you can see the red, you can also see one thirty-six coming from Lafayette, but it's, uh, it's, it's down to the light brown. The majority of the traffic that go to Cloudland Canyon, get off I fifty-nine and, uh, north and south and come through Trenton. So any questions?
Pretty cool.
Any questions? I mean, y'all got any questions?
Well, I think, I think hopefully it'll give y'all, if y'all make y'all's decisions on, uh, uh, recreation and different things like that, you can actually see, you know, how many people are utilizing the things that y'all put in. Uh, we can get even down to the time of day. You know, people are playing ball at night. They're playing ball on Saturday. They're, you know, whatever. So I know Commissioner Hartline would be able to utilize that a lot. Sorry it took so long. I didn't think so, but it's very good information.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Any question?
Nope.
Thank you all very much.
All right, good report.
Good report.
Okay. Move down to, uh, number nine. This is, um, Resolution R dash twenty-seven, that's twenty-four, Notice for Sale of Real Property Located at one twenty-nine Cass Avenue, which is the, where the public defender was out there. And, um, anyone, any got any questions on that? Are we ready to put, you wanna, are we gonna go and put it on like Gov Deals, uh, how you want, you know, Robin?
Well, we can put on Gov Deals, but I would go ahead and, um, ask for still bids too, I think. And so...
That's why we need, as long as we put it for bid, that's, you know, that's whatever you find. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Everybody fine? What, you got any questions? Okay. All right.
And there's a fifteen-day...
Right.
So we gotta put in the paper and stuff?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. Let's get that on the, on the blog there. Move down to number ten, Resolution, Resolution R dash twenty-eight, that's twenty-four, disposal of surplus property of the county. We have two slightly used and maybe not quite a used F-two-fifty trucks. And, um, possibly, I think he's gonna, may have one Crown Vic down there. I don't know. We can talk to him about that, but we need to, some of that stuff we need to get rid of, you know. Uh, any questions on that?
Uh-uh.
Okay. All right. And that will go on, but those will go on Gov Deals. That's where we usually sell that. And if you have any questions about wanting to bid on any of the stuff that the county puts on Gov Deals, you can call our office. And if you're not familiar with Gov Deals, and it gives everybody throughout the whole, you know, whole United States, well, everywhere, the right to go in and look this stuff over because it's, it's from all over the United States, all over, you know, and gives everybody an equal chance to bid, uh, on anything, you know, that we've got or anywhere, any other county or state. All right. Let's move down to number eleven. This is, uh, Resolution R dash twenty-nine, that's twenty-four. Uh, this is, uh, authorizing, uh, the, uh, participation in the ACCG, uh, the Inter Local Risk Management Agency Supplemental Medical Accident and Disability Fund and the First Responder PTSD Program. The PTSD Program, that's the new program. That's the one that she's been working on for, yeah. And, um...
Well, this was a result of a state law that changed when it affected. And so the county has to pick a vendor to do this. ACCG Irma, which is, uh, Irma stands for Inter Local Risk Management Agency, is providing a supplemental medical accident and disability fund called First Responder PTSD Program. And it's, we're not gonna find it any cheaper than them because it's self-insured. So, um, that's what this, this is, this is from Patty Murphy, uh, to recommend. It's really, I put the whole thing in there, but it's really just the last two or three pages. It's just the resolution that you're approving.
But it's, uh, you know, it's, it's actually a state. It was passed during the last session.
It's always, we have to do...
But for us to participate with ACCG, we've got, that's part of the actual, uh, procedure we have to do is do a resolution.
Tell Mr. Stone it's an unfunded mandate.
It is an unfunded mandate. No, we have to fund it. Well, that's his, that's his argument.
But, yeah, it was passed in the legislature and it governed the effect first day of January.
Yep. Uh, any questions on that? If not, we'll put it on, we'll put it on the consent agenda. All right. Anybody got anything else here at the table we want to add to the work session? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll adjourn the work session for five minutes or so and then we'll come back in and go into our regular meeting. Meeting is adjourned here.
Regular meeting.
I'm a little concerned.
Well, that's the city of the rest of your county.
City here and on my, oh, they came and arrested me on my own place.
Which is in the county?
County there, that's where they tased me a few times. Anyways, that's a side note just to let you all know why I don't want to be here. But it's got to be said. And I'm no public speaker whatsoever, obviously.
We just feel comfortable because we just want to hear what you've got to say. I mean, it's just, you know, uh, but the, the, well, you, well, you noticed this, that is it, it was in the city.
Yeah, it's here in Town Creek.
And Town Creek, okay, okay.
Upstream from Jenkins Park where all the kids play.
Yeah.
I mean, I've played there, you've been in it.
Yeah.
It's Hartline, everybody's been in it.
Yeah.
And you go down and watch kids play all the time and look at those labs and that's, that's just stupid. Um, and here we are talking about wanting to bring more people in, more houses in, more traffic in. What do we do about our deteriorated, um, sewer pipes? They've got holes in them over there in the top of them, crevices. I don't know, a quarter inch deep, size of a half a dollar. Manholes down just north of town here, still in the city limits. The bricks are washing away from them down into another creek. You can see, I've even found women's underwear in there. Where it's washing off the hill down into there. And again, tampons, VCs, toilet paper, um, anything you're going to see down in Comode.
So the EPA, HPD has been.
Yeah, EPA, that's, that's another thing.
EPD or EPA, EPD probably.
Uh, well, that's not going to help. They came out last week as Alex, uh, and myself were on TV. They came out and refused to look at one of the busted places. They could have, the lady could have taken one more step to her left and seen where the line was busted. And well, everything again that goes down to Comode was right there. But as she stated, nothing wrong here, nothing wrong. I was with, um, who was that with? Oh, Moore over at the, um, sewage treatment. He was there with us and I had contacted him before. Um, and he, he and I went on a, um, I don't know, we went on a trip around town to look at all of the busted spots. I first told Alex, um, at a private location about it and he said he would get on it and he did. Um, a couple, three weeks later, it was fixed. There was a couple of sacks of quick creep poured around the pipe going in and out of the manhole. And that was it, but it was fixed. So that's when I decided to get my own water samples from right there at the same place. But the EPA lady could not see anything up there because she would not take one more step to her left. That's all it took. As they were leaving, Moore told me, oh, you've got to have license to do that. Yeah, yeah, you have to have license. As he snickered and giggled. That's pretty piss poor. You've got all this and you want to get snickered? They were on TV and nobody ever lied on television. Semantics ruled, don't they? Semantics are great. The EPA lady found nothing, it was gone, she found nothing. And that's what was conveyed over TV.
If you five minutes is that, but let me tell you something.
Well.
You know, it's something, it's important to, you know, Alex is here tonight and.
Oh, I'm aware.
You know, we, you know, but you, you keep seeing EPA, it was EPD, the state, right?
Whoever it was.
That would be the state because EPA would, it wouldn't cover, it's, it's a state.
Whoever it was here, whenever it was, that was the day all hell broke loose.
And, and you met with her and, and Alex.
I tried to meet with her, she kept eluding me. She told me one thing on the phone. I got there, she was going to a different location with Moore in it. So I knew the location, so I went up and that's the place that I'm talking about where she would not take one more step to see what was wrong. What was wrong, hell. Let's bring more people in. Now, that's a private line that she looked at, that she looked at. That's a private line. I was not with them on the other ones. Where it's obviously not fixed with brick rolling out. The actual brick, okay? And it's, uh, I've been told that it could be stormwater. No doubt it could be. Okay, well, does that stop maxi pads from floating out? I mean, if it's not storming, are they not there? Is all of that stuff not there? Is toilet paper not rolling off the hills into the creeks?
I'll contact EP, I'll contact them tomorrow, you know, talk to them, but I mean, we.
I'm not talking one creek, I'm talking multiple creeks.
Now I'll find out, Alex, who, who came up?
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year since our infrastructure, what, sixty-five plus minus years ago? Um, and I'm told that it'd take fifty million dollars plus minus to fix the main lines. When I buy a car, I expect to pay maintenance. What, where's, where's the maintenance in my house? I must maintain it, otherwise I'm going to get rained on. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus or minus a year. Is what it takes. And I'm hearing a lot of things throughout the county.
Your time, your time's up.
A bunch of, money's being spent on garbage.
You need to come back in here and get with myself and Alex. I'll get to, I'll find out who the lady was. I don't know who you, because that's county. We're county, of course, they're city, the city, you know, the southern city. So if you'll get with me Monday, you know, we'll just say what we, I mean, I don't know, I'm not, I.
I've gotten in touch with a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
I have and it's gone to this and this, this is something I can't, I'm, I'm throwing this to the end.
We'll take it up Monday.
Can you come back and let me know too?
What location?
You can be in the meeting and two, two of us commissioners and, and, and we'll get Alex.
I don't mind helping out too, I mean.
Well, as long as two of us can meet, two commissioners.
This is February and EPD has been up here with us already. So we went to every location and Mr. Goins had it. We're actually taking additional samples around the areas.
Yeah.
We just wanted to be questioned. We started that yesterday through their party. And it's our EPD, it was original file. And the next thing you know, the news is here on us and she'd come up for a surprise visit. Couple of weeks ago. We stepped through it and we followed, we tried to do everything we can. When Mr. Goins originally contacted the line, we looked at these areas. As I explained, we do have an ancient sixty-something year infrastructure. We have put several hundred thousand dollars in.
Which is nothing. I, I agree, I mean, yes, I'm, I'm agreed with.
We're, we're looking at a ten to fifteen million dollar loss on our, on our taxpayer.
Y'all don't get me wrong, I am not here to call anybody out. I don't know who is over this, who is to fix it.
Well, it'd be city, but we, we still need, we'll get involved in it.
I just, I'm not here to call anyone out.
Contact Monday morning and we'll.
And then if it is county, uh, I would be, I would think the health department will also be involved with septic tanks and.
This is.
It's sewage.
City, city, it's totally different, yeah.
Well, getting to that, I look like this because I work continuously. I left abruptly. So what time Monday, midnight? I'm, I mean.
Just get with us Monday. We'll see what we can do. You know, Monday morning, call me whenever you get nine o'clock and you call office, I'll be in here. And we'll, Hartline will be with us and I'll find out, uh, uh, tomorrow I can call and find out who the lady was, you know.
We, we have that everybody.
Yeah, and we'll go from there.
Tuesday, we're closed Monday.
Why now?
We're closed, Veterans Day.
Oh, that's right, it's a holiday, that's right. Tuesday, yeah. Veterans Day, that's a very, yeah. So anyway, appreciate you coming up. We got some other people on top, appreciate you. Anyone else want to talk to us? Oh, okay, John Huffman's here tonight, okay.
And just for Anthony, you, you had, there's a bunch of people that donated their five minutes that are watching this, so you had unlimited time, so.
You can have five minutes. Those people who want to come talk to us, they can, but you've got five minutes here tonight. I'll give you a little more because we did run over.
Well, there's only two people, there's only two people talking, so.
Go ahead.
Why are we trying to limit anybody that shows up and wants to talk? We talk about the independent state of Dade, John Huffman. We talk about the independent state of Dade, but that was from people like Monty, Rex, and other departed and living patriots who are not afraid to raise their voices despite being ignored, laughed at and called idiots by Dade government. This is for them. And if anybody wants to take fifteen and step out, I understand. So I want you all to think about something. What does citizen participation mean to you? What do you do with what citizens are telling you besides flip through papers, stare off into space, chuckle and roll your eyes? What message are you sending to citizens about how much you care about what you are hearing when none of you take this seriously? There is no participating. Citizens are just wasting words and time on politicians who could care less what we say, don't take any of it for action, will never contact any of us to respond. And to you, it's just entertainment, a big joke, an annoyance and a waste of your time. And this can't be any more spoon fed to you. Citizens spend their own time and gas to come here and give you the perfect opportunity to hear people's issues right here in your face. All you have to do is listen, take notes and get back to people. But you won't even do that. The people are doing more work in this process than you are and you are the one getting paid. So for all these years I and others have spoken here, why haven't any of you had the decency and service to get back to us ever? And your entire duty involves serving and listening to the people. But Ted, you complain the loudest about having to stay here later when you are paid over one hundred thousand dollars from the people who are here.
You don't know what you're talking about.
Who are here for free.
I go away.
And with so few people that come to meetings, why would you want to limit anybody? And it's only the unpaid citizens that you treat like we are inconveniencing you and holding up your meeting. If the unpaid people only get five minutes, then the library, Evan Stone who just talked, Alliance for Dade, 4H and the rest of your government comrades, we pay get warned and only five minutes too. So everybody gets warned or nobody gets warned. And until you provide written proof that a majority of people ask for your warnings and how limiting only the people is fair for all, then I will talk until I am done. Otherwise, speed dial your buddy Ray and haul me away in cuffs. And I've already talked about this, so this is just another example of how you think citizen participation at meetings is just a big joke. When the people tell you to stop, you need to stop. You are a public servant who works for the people. The people do not work for you. And as a servant, the public you have the duty to serve will tell you when we are done talking. And just to be sure, I put out the word and many people who could not be heard tonight donated me their five minutes. Thanks to all those out there who believe in democracy. I really appreciate your help. So how many more of our families will your new regime make victims of the famous Dade penny bag joke? Where citizens do a refund from your office, get a smirk and a baggie of pennies? And if the citizens ask for a receipt, you reject that and already have Ray Cross's deputies on the phone ready to run over and without even talking to your joker, one deputy guards the door and four deputies will surround the people who are publicly counting pennies on your counter. Yes, the sheriff's department participates in the joke enforcing the Dade penny bag law. And I know many see me as just this angry citizen always going off on our fine, godly government representatives. But if the commissioner office gave you, your spouse or children a bag of pennies and surrounded them with the sheriff's jokes enforcement team, you would really be okay and stay quiet with those you love being victims of the jokes that everybody knows about but doesn't stop? Or would you stand up to defend your families, friends and neighbors and do your best to make sure Townsend, Rumley and their team do not get away with their jokes any more than they already have? And what about open record requests, which are supposed to be formal legal documents for citizens to get information, but you all treat them as more jokes on the people, jokes like this? Open record request from John Huffman. Number one, the name of the person who brought all the footage together with captions and made the completed Splotz video package that you see. Number two, how much did the video cost taxpayers? I don't need, and in my note, I don't need extra documents, just a name and a dollar amount on a yellow sticky is fine, thanks. The response I got, dear Mr. Huffman, thank you for your request to view county records. Your Open Records Act request was received on Friday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. However, your request did not specify an existing county document. You began by asking a question, but ended sentence as a statement. The second sentence asked the county to produce a record that does not exist, e.g., just a name and a dollar amount on a yellow sticky is fine. After a search of county records, we have no documents responsive to your request. Regards, Patrick D. Townsend, county clerk. And that's from May twenty twenty. You spent government time looking for a record named Yellow Sticky. And then you were confused about my request because I said, thanks.
Okay, John, I gave you an extra minute there.
This is flat. You know what, John? What, when are you going to move on? Are you a miserable, unhappy person? Like, I don't understand this at all. This is so, we, we had a person that we buried today.
Yes, I know.
And you want to sit here and tell us how, what a horrible people that we are? You don't even call me or send me an email. Have you ever once called me and said, hey, what do you need today? What is happening today that you need us to do?
First of all.
No, I don't even want to hear you. I, I'm.
First of all, you work for me.
No, I don't work for you. I work for the people.
Okay.
I do not work for you. And what, have you ever read the handbook of a, of a commissioner?
So, so.
Have you read the handbook for a commissioner?
I am not a commissioner. I'm a, I, I.
Obviously not because you do not know what it says and what it means to sit in this seat.
Well, what I heard was you do not work for me, that's what you said.
Go on, keep on, keep on going.
Okay, John.
Let's hear it some more. Let's talk. Let's sit here all night, you get it out.
No, we're not going to.
Come on, let's hear it.
I gave you a minute, minute and a half more than you need.
Let's talk about the, the pennies. Let's talk about that again.
Let's talk about the pennies.
How important are these pennies?
How important are they? What do you mean, how important are they? It didn't happen to you, it happened to me.
Well, I know we're going to hear about it for the rest of your life, I'm sure.
Do you think I'll, of course you will.
Okay.
Until he apologizes for it, you better believe it.
Then he tried to give you the money back?
If I gave someone a bag of pennies, you know, there's a big difference between.
Two dollars, you care so much about two dollars.
I have no idea how many was in there. He didn't, wouldn't tell me how was any.
You probably had some change that you wanted.
He wouldn't, I didn't ask for change. All I asked was how many pennies are in the bag?
Yeah, we know you enjoy it.
And as soon as he asked that, he called the sheriff's department.
Let it go, Melissa, his time's up.
Same standard, same.
Okay, I still have stuff to say, so.
Wait, I, I don't want to hear it.
Well, you don't want to hear it.
Unless you want to do something in a positive way to help this county, I don't want to hear it.
In all honesty, we are sick of every month, the same.
Okay, first of all, I don't come every month.
We, we hear it every, if, whether it's here, it's there.
And all these people that are out there cannot yield you time.
And honestly, don't you think if I came every month and you got back to me? Once, don't you think I would still come?
What do you want? Let's go, let's go do it. What do you want? Let's go. What do you want, John? Let's go do it. Give me a list.
I'm not, I, I've, I've spoken up here for ye, for years.
Let it go, Melissa, he's, he's, his time's up.
The next time you send an email, send one to the paper so they can print it when you tell us we're so far gone, we can never be saved. John, you get sick of that. We didn't, we do the business of Dade County.
You don't know me.
And Dade County is one of the better counties in the whole hundred and fifty-nine of Georgia.
Why don't, why don't you leave if you don't like this county?
One miserable person that just wants to keep bringing it up over. You stated your case.
I hope everyone who is watching this online sees how citizen participation is.
Well, no, you're one person. We have, we have a ton of citizens.
I'm just a taxpayer paying the guys a salary.
Almost every day.
You just all said that you don't work for me, so where's my refund for the salary then? That you have, that, that you should have been using to work for me. Where is my money from what I pay you?
Is that really how you believe it works?
Yes.
That's how you believe it works?
What do you mean?
Keep talking because it's getting heavier and more.
I pay anybody else and if they don't provide a service, then I get a refund from it. But you guys, if you all admitted on video, oh, we're not, you don't provide a service to me?
You drive on these streets.
Isn't that fraud? You don't.
Do you drive on these streets in this county?
Melissa, let it go.
You don't pave the streets.
We need, we need, we got, we got a meeting to go through, okay? Yeah, his time's up.
Ridiculous.
Okay, let's move on.
Disrespectful too.
Anyone else want to come up and talk to us tonight? Okay, come on, Audrey. Go ahead and make an announcement. Okay, just stand out right there, that's fine.
You got five minutes, John.
I don't need five minutes. I just wanted to tell our people about the Christmas parade that's coming up.
That's a positive, right?
Um, so.
How hard you work in everything that you do for the county.
That's, yeah, well, that's okay. I enjoy what I do. I love this county. I'll do whatever I can do. Our Dade County Christmas Parade, twenty twenty-four, uh, it's presented by the Bank of Dade. And, uh, this year's theme is the Twelve Days of Christmas. And we invite everybody, and I put down here, any organization, business, church, group, individual that wants to participate, you're more than welcome. And I've had a lot of questions about this. There's absolutely no fee to be in the Christmas parade. And it's going to be December the fourteenth at six o'clock. We start lining up on the North Industrial Boulevard at five, five-ish. And we come out on South Industrial Boulevard, we come through Trenton and down the square and we stop at Moore Funeral Home and Trenton First Baptist Church. So, uh, we ask that if at all possible, you have some lights. You do not have to do a Twelve Day of Christmas theme. If you've got something else in mind or something you would like to do with your float or truck or whatever, you're more than welcome to do that too. A lot of people like to have a theme, so this year is the Twelve Days of Christmas. And if you have any questions, please just call the bank or, or give me a call, it's all on here. And we hope that you'll participate or at least come out and enjoy it. That's all.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on down. Mr. Hartline, you want to go ahead and give us your update and report?
I don't have anything to report on, but I do want to say something. I've been a commissioner for five years. Mr. Goins, this is the first time he's come in. We give him extra time because he had an issue. Huffman has been coming way before I would come a commissioner and I have not heard one legitimate question or issue that we could fix for him. It's mostly opinions. That is the difference when you come up here as a citizen. When you come with an issue that we can address or fix, then we will listen. But when it's ongoing every month, it's the same, you could watch and it would be the same thing for the last five years from him. That is, that's where this comes from. And another thing, the bag of pennies, I'm pretty sure he got paid with money out of this man's pocket. He didn't just leave the bag of pennies, he also left with the cash for the re, for the money back. That's the part he don't tell about that story.
Ms. Goff?
Well, I will report on Splotz since we spent a hefty amount tonight. It came in this month of, uh, three hundred twelve thousand, one hundred and one, and we're thankful for that. That being said, with what, uh, Evan Stone showed us on the, his, his, uh, attachment there, all those people, all those little dots were people that came through here and you noticed they left, they went to eat. Those are people that helped us pave the roads that nobody gets any benefit out of in this county. Uh, and so we thank, we're thankful for that. It's a little down from last month, but it's normal for the time of year. Coming in in October is actually August money. So we're glad for that. I attended a, uh, this kind of goes along with, with Mr. Goins when we said, I, I attended a meeting in Jasper, Georgia. Uh, I was, am on a Coussa Northwest Georgia Regional Water Council. Uh, and it deals with a five-year plan for our region in water, clean water. That's something that is, obviously, it's, it, it touches everyone. But the biggest, the, the EPD was there that day, and I'm just saying this for information. The thing they talked about was the process of taking the sludge from the sewer, turning it into fertilizer and putting it on properties. Uh, and that sounds like a terrible thing, so I'm just telling you, you're going to see more of that as time goes on because the landfills, most of them will not take that anymore, but there's processes of turning it into fertilizer, it is very good fertilizer for pastures and gardens and, and you name it. But it's just a thing, we don't think we'd ever use that for, but that's what they were there to, I think, trying to make it a little more uh, palatable to citizens because if you watch the news in the last few months in Polk County, Ten, uh, yeah, Polk County, Tennessee, that's what was being taken up and out of Georgia and been put on the, the land up there. But if you ever go through, uh, Copper Hill, that's also been put out there, some of it in Copper Hill is, in my childhood was nothing but a big red ball of dirt. And now it's a very beautiful place as you go through it. So just letting you know that that's, uh, something you're probably going to hear more about. It's not necessarily going to damage our water, but it will be put on pastures next to creeks and that thing where people have pasture and cattle. Uh, I do want to say, this is a hard day. It's a hard day because of this chair down here to my far right. It's the second time, and she should not have to sit here and listen to this stuff, because it's the second time on this, on this particular, uh, commission that we have buried a colleague. We never thought that would happen, but this one passed on this end and that one passed on that end. But I do want to take time to say, as most of you know, everybody knows now, I was not on the ballot, I could not win. I didn't mount a write-in, I didn't change my mind. Next, a, a month from today will be my final day, uh, uh, or final meeting. The first tick of the clock in twenty twenty-five will be my final second to be on this commission. I have enjoyed ninety-nine point something percent of it. Some of the things we heard tonight, tonight take up that other. So I along with Mr. Hartline, this gets old. It gets very old after a while that you keep being called every name. And you're hearing what's said in public, you're not seeing the emails and the things that these people can say. We have families, we have other things to do, and nobody should be subjected to that, to offer to do this job. Mr. General Bob Wood will be coming in. It's not fair for him to come in and have to start hearing this right off of the, the bat. It's part of the job, yes, for people to complain. But you got to remember, those people are people. They're not stoic statues that have no feeling. That don't go home with the same issues of high groceries and high fuel and everything that everybody, we pay taxes just like everybody else. We don't get free taxes because we sit in these seats. Yes, we do get paid. And that's because, who would take it if you didn't have some kind of money coming in from all your running around and all the things you do? So I just want to say to the people of Dade County, those watching, yes, it may have got a little out of hand tonight. But it never should have come up with all that this commission's gone through today. Because this hurts. It hurts to lose somebody. And Lamar cared and loved this community, this county. I would dare say probably more than anybody sitting up here, he took it more to heart than anybody up here. He cared every day about the north end of this county and the rest of it as well. He will be deeply missed. He will always be loved for what he done, the things he helped accomplish in his time on this commission over the years. But just keep in mind, these, these people sitting up here, Don will move up here in just another six weeks or so. But we're just people like everybody else and we're just trying to do a job that's mandated by the government to do because somebody has to do it. You don't always like what you have to do. But it's part of the job. So if anybody out there is listening and you're already on the bandwagon and if you get called an idiot, you know what people are talking about. It's the thing called the village idiot. It's not a, not being mean to them, that's what they call themselves. And they get on there and they tell, they accuse us of everything, laundering money, till you name it. And if I laundered it, it was money left in my pocket that my wa, my wife washed my clothes. And I straightened it back out and still spin it. But we haven't done those things, but we have to listen to them all the time. And we, Melissa, I'm sorry that you blew your top. You don't need to blow your top because you like to make me blow mine when you blow yours. But it finally comes to a head every once in a while, and this is just the first time in this county that I can remember. I know in my sixteen, sixteen years, it's never reached this boiling point. But when you got going through what we're going through down here right now, there's just no need and that, that, that could have waited for another time because we've already heard it month after month after month after month, same thing. So God bless Dade County, God bless you for being here. Sorry to take too long, you didn't cut me off, but, uh, I love Dade County and I thank God for the opportunity to have served and my next month and a half will be whatever I. I love Dade County, and I thank God for the opportunity to have served, and my next month and a half will be whatever I can do to make it a better place.
Melissa, you want to give us a little, little report?
Yeah, I do.
I can, I can come back to you in a minute if you want me to, whatever you want to do.
Well, I just, I do want to apologize. This is normally not the type of person that I am, but it has been a really hard day and, you know, I wouldn't be sitting in this spot either, so it's a, it's a, it's a double day kind of for me. And I just, I have a lot of respect. We don't always agree with each other and, but I have a lot of respect for, for everybody up here and the people in the audience that, uh, that show up, you know, when nobody else shows up every single month, um. And I am very passionate about what I do and, and I want to help everybody do whatever I can. And I think that that's what frustrates me the most with him is, you know, he, he wants to bash us, but he doesn't even give us the opportunity to, to help him. And, uh, I just, you know, I just, I really want to apologize that my emotions really got me today. I'm very sorry.
Okay. Just take a break and get you some water maybe, you know. I'll move on with, uh, my report here, and, you know, that's like Melissa said, you know, we've had a rough week, you know, a rough day and, but, uh, you know, that's, that's John Huffman though. That's kind of, that's the person it is, you know, and he'll always be, I'm sure. Uh, we had, um, we had a report on our courthouse tonight, which was okay. We, it's like about a couple of weeks will be, uh, trying to start moving in on it. Uh, I did report last week that, uh, or last month, uh, the depot, there, everything's fine. Uh, everything's up and running. They're there. Our, uh, public defender's in there, and they love it. Uh, and we did pass, uh, resolution tonight to go ahead and, uh, and put the property that they moved out of for sale, as we said we were going to do, and put that back in, uh, to help pay for our building project. The, uh, election building, uh, Alex reported yesterday. We do, uh, we did, we got the plans right, Alex, and was, Fourteenth, okay, okay. Fourteenth is, is kind of a drop dead date, and we have those, uh, a hard, a full set, and we'll be able to, uh, immediately go in and bid that out, bid a portion of it out, bid the walls out, and so you'll, you'll see some, uh, activity on it. Uh, got to meet with the railroad, uh, week after next, two, you know, Thursday after next, uh, pertaining to the crossings there on Mauryan Road. And, um, there, that's where we had the, um, accidents there, the train, uh, accident here, uh, a few weeks ago, and there's been one a few months ago. So they're coming in, making with their, uh, engineers down there, uh, with GDOT and the railroad. We're trying to get them to go ahead and put, uh, crossarms there, and also with the road that crosses down there by, um, where the, um, uh, telephone goes into, um, you know, my mind went blank. Goes over into New England there, so they'll be, we're trying to get those, both those roads there that, uh, with crossarms. Because there has been several people in the last, say, five years that's had them, that's, that's been hit there. Um, the, uh, being I attended the, uh, our quarterly GDOT meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the bridge on, um, at Squirrel Town up here, it is, uh, it's on, on schedule. Uh, you might wonder what they're doing. They're, they're actually, uh, you know, they prepared that roadbed there, and it will be a temporary, uh, bridge put there, uh, for through traffic in and out, and then they will, uh, take the bridge down. Uh, it'll be a year, it'll be a year to fourteen, fifteen-month project, so once that's done, uh, there'll be demo in that and, and going back with the, with the bridge. Um, we did have a, uh, a meeting, oh, a meeting, we had a training session, uh, for, we do this, try this at least once a year. Uh, we were gonna have it in here, uh, it's a, it's a soil erosion, uh, uh, certification, uh, class, and, um, it's all contractors, uh, from all over can come to it. Uh, and you have to recertify every so many, every three years, some of them four years. And, uh, we had, uh, I had about twenty, about twenty-eight people there that actually came from all over, not just Dade County. We had probably fifteen, uh, from Dade County. Our public works, they have to qualify. You carry a certification card. Uh, and that went over, we did wind up going, like I said, Alex and him let us use, uh, City Hall. And also the city of Trenton, they had three men that was, was at that, that, uh. And other than that, you know, with, um, I spent a lot of time, as much as I could, this, uh, this month, uh, well, this week especially, uh, and last week with, uh, with Lamar, and, uh, so it's been, uh, everyone, uh, as said tonight, it's been a tough, tough month really, you know. Y'all got anything you want to add?
The Veterans Parade on Monday.
The what now?
The Veterans Parade on Monday.
The Veterans Parade, that's right, and, uh, it's on our website, you know, it, uh, I think it starts at six, and then they're gonna have, uh, at the Methodist Church, they'll have a gathering there at the Methodist Church. So, uh, it'll be, uh, it'll be a big day, special day, and hope you can come out. And of course, we mentioned tomorrow at eleven, uh, at the library, you know, that's a, that's gonna be a big day, uh, and it, uh, it'll last on through the day, I guess. Was there a cutoff time on it, Don?
I think around three, three o'clock.
About three, yeah, it starts at eleven, it's around three, so it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a good day, a special day, so. Uh, okay, we'll move on down to, uh, four A, our, in our appearance, we have Mrs. Laura Beth Cunningham, our four H, uh, agent, our UGA extension, uh, agent, to give us her report today.
Good to see you guys on this, I understand. So I started going back into the schools in September, and I've met every fifth grader in our entire county three times now. Um, and we have a good group of fifth graders this year from both schools. I've been really happy to go in to the schools. Sometimes, you know, it's hit or miss, but, um, they've all been really good, so I think we have a big, good group of kids that are, are gonna come through our school system this year, and I'm really happy about that. I started a new thing where I'm, um, the, the Farm Bureau office, um, donates an agriculture book to my office every month, and I've gone, started going to the library, and I'm reading an ag book, and then we do a craft related to that book every month now, um, and it's for like really, really young kids. I mean, anybody's welcome, but it's usually a, a really like preschool and, um, things like that. So that started to grow. We didn't have very many the first month, but we're starting to get a pretty good, it's kind of like the Learn to Read type program, but I'll come in the afternoons. Um, we're, I'm gonna be doing that next Tuesday. Um, we do it at two o'clock. We're gonna read The Garden Next Door, and then next month, we're gonna read Alex the Wonder Lamb. Um, October was National Four H Week, so we put out, um, quite a few posts throughout the month, um, just highlighting a lot of the things that Four H has been doing, and a lot of the kids that, that come through the program, our some, our summer programs, our, um, big ag camp that would, that I did with Ms. Renee Frank at the high school with FFA and just other type things. So we, we try to highlight a lot of that stuff in October. The homeschoolers community club is next week. Um, we're gonna be talking about astronomy. Uh, this last week, we talked about South Carolina, and I always go back and forth. I do a state, and then I do a science lesson, but last month, we learned about South Carolina, and South Carolina has the only tea farm in all of the United States, so there's lots of interesting things like each state that we talk about, so. We did our Rivers Alive cleanup. Uh, I do that jointly with Stephen Bonico. Um, I kind of challenged my homeschoolers to do something besides come to the meeting and run around and do stuff like that. So a group of them did go out, and we cleaned up around Lookout Creek, and we went down to the gate going into the cornfield, and, and we did strategically try to do that before the pumpkin patch, so it would, it would look nice. We'll do that again next year, too. Um, we have about ten days left to order the front door produce box. It's a, it costs thirty dollars for the box. It's a fresh box of produce that comes only from Georgia. Um, so it's locally grown. They pick it, it goes in the box. I pick it up the next day, and I deliver them. And so if anybody is interested in that, it's, it's a, it's a really big box. I was really pleased with it last year. It's well worth it.
And you do, you deliver it, or you have to pick it up at your place at the ag building, or?
Usually I can deliver. I usually try to deliver.
Yeah, a lot of people would pick it up, I mean, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, you can pick it up at the ag center, but I can deliver it, too. Um, we have had a little boy that's been entering the, the state pumpkin growing contest, um, for a couple of years now, and this year he placed second. Um, he grew a pumpkin that was a hundred and twenty-five pounds, and it was called Cinderella's Ride. That's the breed of the pumpkin, and, um, he's gonna do it again this year, this next year, and I bet he'll, the winning pumpkin was two fifty-three. So he's got a ways to go, but he is definitely determined to, to catch up and, and win it next year. But that's Brock Christopher, and he does a lot of stuff in Four H with me. It's that time of year that shotgun's gonna start soon. Um, we're really hoping to recruit a lot of younger kids this year. We're gonna graduate seven of our seniors. Um, and they are very competitive, so hopefully we can get a lot of sixth and seventh, seventh graders coming up this year. Um, but registration will be December fifth at six o'clock, and it's anybody in sixth through twelfth, sixth through twelfth grade that can come, boys and girls. And we had our chicken show earlier in the week. Um, our A and R agent, Brandon Burt, he was our judge. Um, he's really finally starting to settle into Dade County and, and get some stuff going, so, um, y'all should be seeing him a lot more now. He's, I think he's shy, but he's much better now. Um, Colton Moore came and was our auctioneer again. He always makes that a good time, so. Brock Christopher, who also grew the pumpkin, was the winner, um, of our show this year. Um, actually, Mr. Philip Hartline bought his pen of hens. He was not able to be there because he was selling some cattle in Coleman, so Delbert Wallen got to take the picture with Brock. But, um, Mr. Hartline was the, the, um, the commissioner who bought the, the, the hens this year. Our second place ru, uh, winner was Ruby Jane Thompson, um, and she's been working really hard at this, uh. You would have to, if you ever come to a chicken show and Ruby Jane is there, hers are the best-looking chickens. Like she bathes them and blow drops them and boils them and puts vaseline on their feet. These are the prettiest chickens you have ever seen. Uh, Ms. Ruby Jane takes it very seriously. Um, and the buyer who bought her chickens were Kenneth Wilson.
I hope he continues that for her.
Yes. Um, and this program is another one that I really like because, um, we auction off those chickens at the end, and the money goes back to the kids for their hard work. And these were all of our kids that participated this year, so we, we switch it up a little bit. Um, I asked Brandon to like ask the kid questions, you know, instead of just looking at their chicken and ju, judging their chickens. Um, like he was asking them what they were feeding them, and he's trying to really, we're really wanting the kids to get more involved, and, um, next year, we're gonna require them to like keep a little record book, um, and kind of throw in some entrepreneurship type stuff with it, you know, are you gonna sell the eggs? Are you gonna sell them for this? And, you know, we're gonna try to up the game a little bit. We are really, really, really wanting to do that same thing, but with piglets. Um, we're kind of seeing if we can gain some interest in this. I have a few homesteaded type families that are interested in it. The way this one would work is the kids would get two piglets. Um, they would grow them up to where they're about two hundred and fifty pounds. Um, they would have a show for the pigs, and then they would have to auction off one. And then the second one, we are gonna have, um, like a local slaughterhouse be here, ready, fill out your form, throw it on the trailer, and, and that way they can have a whole pig of their own, um, to go in their freezer, so. We're kind of looking at more self-sustainable type things, but hopefully we can get an interest in this and, and see if we can make that one work, too. Um, the jarro spider, I don't know if you guys have heard about this. Um, the UGA is really keeping track of it. Um, and they're not dangerous. I really want to reiterate that these spotters are not dangerous. They're just trying to track their progress. Um, and as of right now, they're only like moving up the coast about ten miles a year, so we're just now getting them. Um, they have been reported. I know Mr. Larry Williams has sent me some pictures, and some citizens have sent me some pictures. They're not a bad spider. Please don't kill them. Um, but they do look really scary, and they're really big, but just want everybody to know that they're not dangerous, so. Um, Brandon is gonna start a program in January. Uh, his background is in wildlife, and he is going to, um, I think he just put out on Facebook today, I couldn't get it on the slide quick enough, like each month what class that he's gonna teach. Um, but it's gonna be geared around, um, wildlife and hunting and cleaning and, and things like that. So that will start in January, and I will have more information about that soon. The, uh, Tri-State Keeper Brews Meeting is gonna be Monday, November ninth at seven. And then the Tri-State Cattlemen's Association will not have a meeting this month.
Okay.
That is it.
All right.
Uh, Laura Beth?
Yes.
Did I say your name on the ballot the other day?
You sure did.
How did that come out?
Did you win?
I assume so, but I, I don't know, but I was the only one on it, so I assume that just.
Did you vote for yourself?
Um.
You don't have to ask that. You don't have to answer that. Yeah.
It's okay that you did.
Robert says he never votes for himself, but we all know that's not true.
Well, there was, there's no other option, and it doesn't let you leave it blank.
Yeah, yeah.
But if there would have been a write-in, I probably would have wrote Scott in.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Appreciate all you do. Okay, let's move down, uh, to number five A, our monthly finances or report. If you would, uh, talk to us, Mr. Towns, give us a report, please.
All right. Okay. October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, general fund had a balance of one million, two hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. General's, uh, certificate of deposits in the general fund is one point eight million, so it's a total of three million, sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Federal asset fund, US Treasury has a balance of zero. Share special fund, a balance of two thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. Drug abuse education fund, twelve thousand four hundred fifteen dollars. Supplemental juvenile services fund, thirty thousand seventeen dollars. Victim assistance fund, two, two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. Jail fund, nineteen thousand four hundred sixteen dollars. Federal asset fund, Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, ARPA, four hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars. Accommodations, hotel motel tax, three hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred nineteen dollars. Employees' flexible spending account, twenty-four thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars, and payroll account, two hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars. SLOSH funds on hand, where's a project, and the projects account was sixty-one thousand twenty-nine dollars. And then the, uh, that's two thousand fifteen, and then the twenty, two thousand twenty-one SLOSH. Project account was a hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred fourteen dollars. SLOSH proceeds account, one point eight million, with one million eight hundred seventy thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars. Uh, then you see the different certificates of deposit listed at the bottom there. Looking down at the income statement for the month of, and this is as of September thirtieth, uh, with three months behind us there, uh, the actual nine thirty balance that came in was nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars. We've budgeted eight hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars, so we were, um, sh, under, uh, excess funds of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. And let's see, the budget year to date was two million, seven hundred fifteen thousand thirty-six dollars. Had budgeted two million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred forty-one dollars, so excess funds of a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred ninety-five. And that's seventeen point seven two percent. Looking at the expenses for September thirtieth, uh, we had one million, three hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars as of September thirtieth. We'd budgeted one million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars, so we were under budgeted a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars. Year to date, had spent four million, sixty-five thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars. Budgeted four million, one hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred, uh, six hundred twenty-six dollars, and so that's at twenty-five point five three percent. The budget attained so far for the year should be right at twenty-five percent with just three months out of the way or expiring, and so revenues again attained were seventeen point seven two, and expenses were at twenty-six point five three overall. Looking at local option sales tax, we did collect two hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents, Looking at local option sales tax, we did collect two hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents. And in splosh, as Commissioner Goff reported, we have collected three hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and one dollar and seventy-six cents. The following report is the twenty-one splosh tracking report, and everything looks to be in order there. And then the last report is the two thousand and fifteen. We still have some fire department money, but we won't go into that. We're going to start spending that money for them, I guess, that last thirty-nine thousand. Rodney, is he back there? Yeah, he's got, that got his attention. He looked up on that one.
Blinked.
He might have, he woke up. So, the last report here on the, is from the tax commissioner, and that is her office. She, Angie Galloway, has been, of course, started collecting the property taxes for the year. And let's see, year to date, collected eight hundred, two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. We have a total budget of six million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So she's got a ways to go, but that is a good start. Twelve point nine six percent for the first three months of the year. I'd like to say, if I may, take just a second. The county clerk position has been advertised. It's on our website. So if you're interested in looking at that, please do. We're very interested in taking applications, and we'll continue to take applications until the position is filled. Like I said a couple of months ago, Rebecca's going to be the county finance officer. I can't think of anybody else more appropriate than her, because she's been doing a lot of it, if not most, almost all of it, over the last two or three years. And she is a CPA by trade, and so we're proud to have her. But we'll be focusing on the county clerk position. It is available, again, online. Just go to the Dade County website, www.dadecounty-ga.gov, or just Google Dade County, Georgia. And you'll see the one that says official website, and you can, and go in there and search for job opportunities. And you'll, you'll see it posted. And then Carrie's putting that up on the screen now as we talk about it.
We are, and we posted it in the links.
Posted in the links too. Transition is going well. Today was, as everyone has already stated, a tough day. I've known the Lowry family since I was a young guy. I mean, I was a kid. And I, I wrote a little thing on his page, but I knew Tommy and Ann way before I knew Lamar, only just because he was a little older than me and already out of school and on his way to his career and stuff. But outside of Ted, and, and I could have said Ted and Alan, of course Alan passed a few years ago. But outside of Ted, and I guess I've known, worked with Lamar as long as anybody here. And so it was a tough day. It was a, if you can say it was a good funeral, it was a great funeral. It was a lot of happiness and some sadness and some crying and some laughing. Ted told story. Ted, if you don't know Ted, he's a storyteller. And if, you know, we can't verify anymore, because the guys that were there to verify both left us, and.
Wasn't that convenient though?
Wasn't that convenient? So he could add a few little things to the story that always makes it even better. Kind of like Jerry Clower, I'm sure. But anyway, so, but we're going to miss Lamar. We've already been missing Lamar. And he not only was a good commissioner, he was a good citizen of Wildwood. And he highly, highly, highly respected emergency services in Dade County. He loved the fire department. He loved the North Dade Fire Department. And served there and served all of our firemen over the years. He very, very rarely, in fact, I don't know that he ever voted against anything dealing with emergency services. I'd have to go back and search the records, but I don't think he did. And that shows a lot. You know, sometimes it's hard to make this decision commissioners make, because money's, money is tight. But he, he loved fire services. I appreciate them today. They showed up in good numbers. And then they had, they were in the procession to the cemetery, and that meant a lot. And in addition to that, just law enforcement in general. He loved, he loved law enforcement. So Kathy is hurting. She's in shock. And if you, some of y'all, and that's a tough club to be in. I'm in that club, and it's not a happy place to be right now for her. So please, please, please pray for her. Her family's around her right now, but they're going to go home, and she's going to be by herself. And that's a tough time. I, I know Audrey's sitting over there. There's several in the room. And when they go home and you're lonely, and it's, it's a hard place to be. So send her a card, drop her a line, stop in and offer to take her to lunch or dinner or something, you know, because that's going to mean a whole lot in the next few days. One other quick thing is Bob and I, Bob Woods and I will be in training next month. It's the first, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of December every four years, or every two years, for county commissioners. So we'll be in training in Athens. I will miss the last meeting, and I just want to say thank you. I've enjoyed being county clerk and CFO for eighteen years as of September, November twentieth. It's hard to believe, coming up. And I appreciate, I've worked with a lot of commissioners over the years. I've enjoyed working with every one of them. And everybody tries to get things stirred up between me and commissioners. I love every commissioner we've ever had. We've never had a bad commissioner, in my opinion. They've all been good, they've all been different, and that's what makes Dade County great. We're very diverse, very independent thinking, and people at New Salem don't think like people at New Home. People at the Rosie Fund don't think like people at Wildwood. That's what makes it's great. And so looking forward to serving January first, but I appreciate the opportunity afforded me over the last eighteen years. Thank you.
Okay.
That concludes the finance report.
That is, that is, that is a mandatory training he's going to do. That's something, you don't have a, you don't have a choice. You go there unless you're under, you know, you're really sick, you know, so. Okay, we've.
It's a good one too. It's a really good one.
Oh yeah. Oh, you learn a lot. Yeah, you get, you know. We've had, we've heard our financial report presented by Don Townsend. And I need a motion pertaining to that. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve is read.
Okay, I have, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Okay. I do have a motion and a second. Call a vote, Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay. Robin, you got anything for us tonight, or legal matters or anything you need to?
I don't, Mr. Sherman.
You don't get any paid then, just probably. I appreciate you saying that. All right. I have an unfinished business for new business. All right, the reading of the minutes of our last month, our last month's regular meeting. Any special call meeting will not be required, since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. Minutes are public record and available for review in our county commission office. The minutes are included in our consent agenda, which I will ask Mr. Townsend to go over with us, and we will entertain a motion.
Okay. As a approval of the agenda as amended by adding four D, which is represented for the Dade County School District. Let's see, approval of the previous meeting minutes, review of personal status report, the board proclamations, proclamation for adoption awareness a month as of November two thousand and twenty-four, proclamation of hospice month, November two thousand and twenty-four, proclamation honoring the eightieth anniversary of the Dade County Library, which pause, is tomorrow. So we are all invited, about eleven AM. Back on this, approval of three AEDs for Davis Fire Department under their splosh. The historic courthouse restoration project update for Mr. Cole Atkins. The lease agreements for space inside the historic courthouse to include the allowance for Dade and the IDA for six month term. Then review that in six months, July, as of July first. The IDA projects update and request for funds. And a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the Industrial Development Authority for asphalt for the Highland and Vanguard Drive paving. Resolution R dash twenty-seven dash twenty-four, notice for sale of real property located at one twenty-nine Case Avenue in Trenton, Georgia, to begin that process and advertisements. Resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-four, disposal of surplus county property. To two F two fifty trucks on gov deals. And then resolution R dash twenty-nine dash twenty-four, authorizing participation in the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia in our local risk management agency. Supplemental medical accident and disability fund, primarily the, dealing with the first responder PTSD program.
Any questions? Correction sometime. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to the second. I call a vote. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay. Y'all got anything else y'all want?
Did everybody have a good Thanksgiving? This is Thanksgiving, Mark.
That's right. Be careful if you're traveling, you know, and keep Lamar and his family, as Don said, in your prayers. Be sad all day. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Call a vote. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. Meeting adjourned. Appreciate all y'all standing with us.